Good evening. I'd like to call and order the Special Planning, Building, and Zoning Committee. May we have a roll call, please?
Chairman Stanton.
Present.
Vice Chairman Arnett.
Present.
Trustee Mills.
Present.
Trustee Newell.
Present.
Trustee Palafas.
Present.
Trustee Gata.
Present.
Mayor McLeod.
Present.
Thank you. New business, request approval of a two-year agreement between the Village of Hoffman Estates and, geez, Das Bier Garden LLC.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions up here? Kevin, Mark, you want to explain what's going on?
Yeah, just, I'd like to, I guess, just highlight a couple of things. The Beer Garden has been here for three years now, and Andrew Hartman, the proprietor, asked for another extension. As you guys well know, a couple of the major changes, a lot of things have stayed the same, including terms of the special events. But kind of the two major changes is this would be a two-year agreement with two one-year mutual options, where the village, if after the two years the village and the Beer Garden would like to do another year, they can, and do that again through the 2021 season. But just kind of given the status of, you know, the Village Green Ad-Hoc Committee and some of the things that the village is doing out there, kind of the uncertainty of how it might be planned, we didn't necessarily want to get too deep into into an agreement for too long. So that's the one major change. And then the other one is going from a commission-based fee to a flat fee, which is typical of restaurants or retail. So he would pay that flat fee every month, and obviously still pay the same commissions that he did during the special events, the Fourth Fest, the Thursday night concerts, and the Platts concert, along with the sales tax, food and beverage tax, and all of those other extras. So that's about it.
All right, thank you. Again, anybody have any questions up here? All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, roll call, I'm sorry, that's right.
Vice Chairman Arnett.
Present.
Chairman Stanton.
No, we need more than present.
Sorry, aye, yes.
Chairman Stanton.
Aye.
Trustee Mills.
Aye.
Trustee Newell.
Aye.
Trustee Palafas.
Aye.
Trustee Gata.
Aye.
Mayor McLeod.
Aye.
Thank you. Looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
A second.
Thank you. Do we need a roll call for that as well?
Yeah.
Okay, let's have one.
Vice Chairman Arnett.
Aye.
Chairman Stanton.
Aye.
Trustee Mills.
Aye.
Trustee Newell.
Aye.
Trustee Palafas.
Aye.
Trustee Gata.
Aye.
Mayor McLeod.
Aye.
We are adjourned.
I would like to call to order the Special General Administration and Personnel Committee for tonight, April 2nd, 2018. Please call the roll.
Vice Chairman Mills.
Present.
Chairman Arnett.
Present.
Trustee Stanton.
Present.
Trustee Newell.
Present.
Trustee Palafas.
Present.
Trustee Gata.
Present.
Mayor McLeod.
Present.
And in the absence of trustee Karen Arnett, who's a little under the weather today, we wish her well. We have one item under new business tonight, request approval of a resolution creating the 60th Anniversary Commission.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Anybody want to mention anything on this?
I have nothing, nothing to add at this point.
I think there was one typo in here that you may have caught already, because I know I'd seen it earlier, where it said 50th Anniversary in one spot. Looks like someone may have caught that. Okay, great. Trustee Palafas, you have a question?
Are you the chair?
Nobody's told me anything like that.
That's all.
I have no idea who's on the committee. We are just creating it. Are you planning to appoint people?
Yes.
Okay. All right, any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye.
Oh, roll call.
Chairman, Chairman Arnett.
Aye.
Vice Chairman Mills.
Aye.
Trustee Stanton.
Aye.
Trustee Newell.
Aye.
Trustee Palafas.
Aye.
Trustee Gata.
Aye.
Mayor McLeod.
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you.
Motion to adjourn, oh.
I thought we did the, all right, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, please call the roll.
Okay. Chairman Arnett.
Aye.
Chairman Mills.
Present.
Trustee. Trustee Stanton.
Aye, aye.
Trustee Newell. Trustee Palafas.
Aye.
Trustee Gata.
Aye.
Mayor McLeod.
Aye.
We've had a phone in.
All right, let's see how I do. This will be interesting. Okay, I'd like to call the Special Public Works and Utility Committee to order on this April 2nd. May I have a roll call, please?
Chairperson Newell.
Present.
Vice Chairperson Gata.
Present.
Trustee Palafas.
Present.
Trustee Mills.
Present.
Trustee Stanton.
Present.
Trustee Arnett.
Present.
Mayor McLeod.
Present.
Okay, we have a quorum. Under new business, we have one item. It's request authorization to a bidding and award contract for the emergency repair and lining of two sections of sanitary sewer located on Higgins Road at Manchester Drive, which is Phase 1, to institute form technologies out of Orland Park, Illinois, in an amount not to exceed $82,840.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Mr. Neville, would you like to just give them a short synopsis of that?
Sure. As the committees aware, we did have a 20-inch sanitary line collapse that ran along Higgins not that long ago. After we went down, corrected the collapse, we went and cleaned out all the debris that had fallen in the line. We televised the line, and we've got a couple of sections of sanitary sewer that are in pretty bad shape. So we're looking to line those as quickly as possible. We found two companies that met with us relatively quickly that were able to give us quotes on the work, and we're requesting or recommending approval of the lowest one.
Okay, and how soon would they be able to start? Do we know?
They'll have to custom order the liner, and that might take two to three weeks. And then as soon as the liner's in, they'll probably get us in the schedule. They're anticipating that this work might take them two days. We might have a day of prep before and a day after of cleanup work, but as far as, they should be out here one to two days.
Okay.
Doing the work.
Any questions up here?
No, I have one. When are they going to start, Joe?
We, upon approval, and we get the contract signed, then they'll order the liners, which they're a special order. So it'll take two to three weeks for the liners to be manufactured. And then as soon as they ship the liner out, we'll know, we'll get ourselves in the schedule after that. So we're hoping within, you know, three to four weeks, we can get it done.
Okay, thank you. That's all.
You're seeing no other questions. We have a motion and a second. May I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Arnett.
Aye.
Chairperson Newell.
Aye.
Vice Chairperson Gata.
Aye.
Trustee Palafas.
Aye.
Trustee Mills.
Aye.
Trustee Stanton.
Aye.
Mayor McLeod.
Aye.
Okay, motion passed, no nays. May I have a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.
A motion and a second. May I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Arnett.
Aye.
Chairperson Newell.
Aye.
Vice Chairperson Gata.
Aye.
Trustee Palafas.
Aye.
Trustee Mills.
Aye.
Trustee Stanton.
Aye.
Mayor McLeod.
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Trustee Arnett.
Present.
Aye, present.
Trustee Newell.
Present.
Trustee Palafas.
Present.
Trustee Stanton.
Present.
Trustee Gata.
Present.
Mayor McLeod.
Present. Can everybody please rise? Trustee Mills, you want to listen to the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, trustee Mills. With the leave of the board, I'd like to go down to Item 6, President's Report, and just do the probationary police officer swearing in. Is that okay with everybody?
Yes.
Okay. Chief? Floor is yours.
Good evening, mayor and village board. The police department is proud to present Clayton Johnson to be sworn in tonight as a probationary police officer.
Okay. Want to introduce your family, Clayton?
Yes, this is my mother, Daryl, my girlfriend, Megan, and my uncle Bill.
Great. A nice turnout of your soon-to-be fellow officers here. You got the Fair and Police Commission. Pete's here, very good. Okay, raise your right hand. I, Clayton Johnson.
I, Clayton Johnson.
Have been appointed to the office.
Have been appointed to the office.
A probationary police officer.
A probationary police officer.
In the Village of Hoffman Estates.
In the Village of Hoffman Estates.
The County of Cook and Kane.
The County of Cook and Kane.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
Or affirm.
Or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
A probationary police officer.
A probationary police officer.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Makes it official. What do we do with this very nice badge we got here, Chief? Nice job. Why don't you come on up and we'll get some pictures, and gentlemen, we'll take a picture with your camera too, if you want.
Okay.
Who's, who's got the camera here?
Clayton does.
Clayton, okay, come on, Clayton.
What?
Now you, Clayton.
What? Go through the camera.
Run the gun. Congratulations.
She dangling there a little bit?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Gavely employed.
Congratulations. Let's get a picture here.
Okay, three, two, one, smile. And three, two, one, smile. Thank you.
How about with this?
Yeah, with your camera, you want to take it?
With your phone?
With your phone, yeah. Joe, dude.
Joe's multi-timer. Okay, and three. Three and a half. Two.
Did you want me to get on my toes too?
All right.
I know, I'm like. Well, wait a minute, hang on. Oops. Another rainbow.
You're good, oh, there we go.
And.
You're getting Ted's good side now.
Three, two, one. Good.
Good job.
Okay. Okay, with the leave of the board, we'll go back to our regular agenda. We'll get to item number three, recognition of the audience. This is the time, if someone has a question or concern for an item that is not on the agenda, that you want to bring forward to the village board and the village staff, now's the time to come forward. Yes, sir. Identify yourself, name and record for the address, for the record, name and address for the record.
Ed Frank, 694 Illinois Boulevard. I thought recognition of the audience meant you stand up and applaud us.
We could do that.
We could do that.
Just a couple of things. I was, I was at a potluck dinner for one of the commissions that we have, and I was talking to the chairperson, and she told me that she was on this commission almost from its beginning, and that was, it started before Mike O'Malley became president of the board. That's a long, long time ago. And I said, haven't you ever been recognized by the village board or anything? She said, no. And that got me to thinking, how many, how many people serve on the commissions here in Hoffman Estates that don't get recognized for the years of effort that they put in? And perhaps this is something that you want, as a board, want to look at to see how you can find out who serves so long, and what kind of recognition you want to give them. That's number one. Number two, I live on Illinois Boulevard, as you know. Third house in from Roselle Road, and about three weeks ago, I went for a walk. I picked up 29 aluminum cans before I got to where the mosque is, and that's just on one side. People are throwing stuff out, and I think there should be a sign where somebody says, no, no littering or whatnot. And the third thing, it just occurred to me as I, as I was sitting here, we've had the, going back a number of years, the Elgin Symphony Orchestra play, play for the, play for the community. They're a gem, even though they're the Elgin Symphony Orchestra, they are a gem of the northwest suburbs. You know, to go down to hear some decent classical music downtown, you know, you're paying for parking, you're paying for the tickets, you know, it costs you 200 bucks for you and your wife to go down to hear the Chicago Symphony. Now, I'm not saying that the Elgin Symphony is as good as the Chicago Symphony, but you hear damn good music from interested musicians, and they do a fantastic job. And while they say Elgin, they're going through some financial problems. You may want to consider calling them, seeing what they can do for us during the summertime, and make some kind of donation to them. A lot of people here who, in Hoffman Estates, who make that trip to Hemmings Hall in Elgin to hear them five or six times a year, would appreciate that. I should have brought that up at a coffee with the board, but while I was here tonight, I thought I'd do it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Not, we'll move on to the approval of the minutes of the March 19th, 2018 meeting.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion, there's a second. Any questions on the minutes? Can you call the roll, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Arnett.
Aye.
Trustee Mills.
Aye.
Trustee Newell.
Aye.
Trustee Palafas.
Aye.
Trustee Stanton.
Aye.
Trustee Gata.
Aye.
Mayor McLeod.
Aye, motion carried. We'll move on to consent agenda. Chair will accept a motion? A second. So motion and a second to approve the omnibus vote. The items appearing on that vote will be, A, approval of the agenda, B, approval of the schedule of bills for April 2nd, 2018, in the amount of $1,656,724 and 39 cents. C, request board approval of an ordinance authorizing the sale of personal property owned by the Village of Hoffman Estates Fire Department brush truck. D, request board approval of an ordinance reserving volume cap in connection with private activity bond issues and related issues. E, request board authorization to purchase Allied World National Insurance Company excess liability insurance from alien and Mesero Insurance Services for the policy term of May 1, 2018, through January 1, 2019, for a total fixed cost of $55,202. F, request board authorization to waive formal bidding and purchase 69 MSA G1 fire service self-contained breathing apparatus from Air One Equipment, Inc., South Elgin, Illinois, in an amount not to exceed $513,185. G, request board approval of change order number one to the contract with Lori Construction Company of Displanes, Illinois, for the Hoffman Boulevard over Canadian National Railroad Superstructure Repairs Project, in an amount of $22,772, for a total not to exceed $285,301. H, request board authorization to extend the 2017 contract for 2018 roadway pavement markings program to preform traffic control systems, Elk Grove, Illinois, in an amount not to exceed $57,000. I, request board authorization to extend 2017 contract for 2018 contracted weed control and fertilization for various village-owned sites and rights-of-way to True Green Carpeters, Illinois, low bid, in an amount not to exceed $15,120. J, request board authorization to award 2018 contract for landscape maintenance services for A and B locations, village-owned sites, and state-county right-of-ways to Vicardinus, East Dundee, Illinois, in an amount not to exceed $75,203. K, request board authorization to extend 2017 contract for 2018 concrete maintenance restoration to Mondi Construction, Inc., West Chicago, Illinois, low bidder, at a unit price of $5.85 per square foot for sidewalk, $22.50 per lineal foot for curb replacements, and $52 per square yard for driveway apron replacements, in an amount not to exceed $110,000. L, request board authorization to extend 2017 contract for 2018 sidewalk raising mudjacking program to Raise Right, Carroll Stream, Illinois, low bid, at a unit price of $2 per square foot for sidewalk, in an amount not to exceed $40,000. M, request board authorization to award contract for purchase of 36 complete Mueller Fire Hydrants to Zebel Water Service Products, Inc., Elk Grove, Illinois, low bid, in an amount not to exceed $105,058. There's a motion and a second. Anybody have any questions or concerns about any of these items on the consent agenda? Seeing that there is not, can you call the roll, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Arnett.
Aye.
Trustee Mills.
Aye.
Trustee Newell.
Aye.
Trustee Palafas.
Aye.
Trustee Stanton.
Aye.
Trustee Gata.
Aye.
Mayor McLeod.
Aye, motion carried. We'll move back to President's Report. We are ready today to swearing in the officer. We have some proclamations, Madam Clerk?
Yes, we do.
Yes, I have the first one. Officer of the Mayor proclamation, whereas during the month of April, in honor of National Child Abuse Prevention Month, people across the country come together to raise awareness about child abuse and neglect. And whereas, child abuse is when a parent or caregiver, whether through action or failing to act, cause injury, death, emotional harm, or risk of serious harm to a child. There are many forms of child maltreatment, including neglect, physical abuse, sexual abuse, exploitation, and emotional abuse. And whereas, child abuse occurs at every level across ethnic and cultural lines, within all religions, and all levels of education. And whereas, every year, more than 3 million reports of children maltreatment are made to state and local agencies in the United States, involving more than 6 million children. Reports can include multiple children. The United States has one of the worst records among industrial nations, losing on an average between four and seven children every day to child abuse and neglect. And whereas, every adult involved in the life of a child plays a critical role in helping maintain that child's safety. It's important to recognize their vital role and learn how to help protect the children in our life from abuse and neglect. Be it therefore resolved that William D. McLeod, acting under and by the virtue of authority vested in him by the Constitution of the State of Illinois and the laws of the Village of Hoffman Estates, hereby proclaim April 2018 as National Child Abuse Prevention Month. In the Village of Hoffman Estates, and urge all Hoffman Estates citizens, government agencies, business leaders, hospitals, schools, public and private institutions in the village to promote awareness of child abuse, to support programs and policies that reduce the incidence of child abuse, and to provide opportunities for all to participate in the awareness and prevention of child abuse.
Chair will accept a motion.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. We're very fortunate to have the Children's Advocacy Center here located, headquartered in the Hoffman Estates, and we do have a couple of representatives from the CAC in attendance. If you ladies want to come up to the podium there, and you want to call the roll on that motion, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Arnett.
Aye.
Trustee Mills.
Aye.
Trustee Newell.
Aye.
Trustee Palafas.
Aye.
Trustee Stanton.
Aye.
Trustee Gata.
Aye.
Mayor McLeod.
Aye, motion carried. You have the floor. I want you to introduce yourselves, and tell us where you're from, and why you're here.
So I'm Taylor Jacob. I'm the Children's Advocacy Center's development coordinator.
And I'm Holly Ross. I'm the communication coordinator for the Children's Advocacy Center.
And we just want to say thank you so much for all of your continued support from the village, from Mayor McLeod, throughout all of the years that we've been there. So we really just want to thank you. And we also want to invite everyone to the Champions for Children 5K, 5K in June this year. We're really excited to be hosting the 11th annual event, so that'll take place at the center. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Come on up.
You have to go through the camera.
Thank you so much.
Thanks for all you do.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's get a picture here, too.
Can't get out without a picture.
Yeah, you can't get out without a picture. Yeah, absolutely.
All right, everyone, smile. Three, two, one. We'll take one more. Three, two, one. And three, two, one. One more, just to make sure. Three, two, one. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Officer of the Mayor proclamation, whereas Autism Awareness Month was developed to increase public awareness of autism spectrum disorder, to provide treatment resources, psychoeducation about the disorder and the effectiveness of early intervention, and to empower families and individuals with ASD to get access to resources and increase their knowledge about the disorder. And whereas autism spectrum disorder is a complex development disability, signs typically appear during early childhood and affect a person's ability to communicate and interact with others. ASD is defined by a certain set of behaviors and is a spectrum condition that affects individuals differently and to varying degrees. And whereas in 2016, the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention issued their ADDM Autism Prevalence Report, the report concluded that the prevalence of autism has risen to one in every 68 births in the United States, nearly twice as great as the 2004 rate of one in 125, and almost one in 54 boys. And whereas autism is treatable, children do not outgrow autism, but studies show that early diagnosis and intervention lead to significantly improved outcomes. And whereas public awareness, education, and advocacy can aid in increasing the ability that a child with ASD will meet his or her maximum potential, be it therefore resolved that William D. McLeod, acting under and by virtue of the authority vested in him by the Constitution of the State of Illinois and the laws of this Village of Hoffman Estates, hereby proclaim the month of April 2018 as National Autism Awareness Month in the Village of Hoffman Estates, and urge all Hoffman Estates citizens, government agencies, business leaders, hospitals, schools, and public and private institutions in the village to promote awareness of autism spectrum disorder, to support programs and policies that increase the opportunity of providing resources to all individuals affected by the disorder, and to provide opportunities for all to participate in the awareness of autism.
Chair will accept a motion.
So moved.
A second.
Motion, there's a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, can you pull the board, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Arnett. Oops, you got her muted. Sorry, Karen, we had you muted. Trustee Arnett.
Aye.
Trustee Mills.
Aye.
Trustee Newell.
Aye.
Trustee Palafas.
Aye.
Trustee Stanton.
Aye.
Trustee Gata.
Aye.
Mayor McLeod.
Aye, motion carried. Dr. Marks, would you accept this? Half of your department? Thank you.
Office of the Mayor proclamation, whereas, established in 1993, the Corporation for National and Community Service, CNCS, is a federal agency that engages more than 5 million Americans in service throughout its core programs, Senior Core, AmeriCore, and the Social Innovation Fund, and leads President Obama's National Call to Service Initiative. Initiative, "United We Serve." And whereas, to spotlight the impact of national service and thank those who serve, mayors across the country will participate in the Fifth Annual Mayor's Day of Recognition for National Service on April 3, 2018. And whereas volunteering in national service is a vital and cost-efficient, effective solution to our nation's most difficult challenges, the CNCS stands ready to help Americans tackle these challenges and build a better future for our people, neighborhoods, and nation. And whereas people diverse, passionate, and committed make America strong. Through national service and volunteering, Americans from all walks of life contribute to their communities and the nation. Today's social and economic challenges are complex and require comprehensive, integrated, and innovative approaches to shape solutions that work. Engaged citizens are at the center of these solutions. Be it therefore resolved that William D. McLeod, acting under and by virtue of the authority vested in him by the Constitution of the State of Illinois and laws of the Village of Hoffman Estates, hereby proclaims the day of Tuesday, April 3, 2018, as Mayor's Day of Recognition for National Service in the Village of Hoffman Estates, and urges all Hoffman Estates residents and businesses to join in its observance.
Chair will accept a motion.
So moved.
A second. There's a motion, a second. This ties in very well with what retired trustee Ed Frank was talking about earlier. We do owe a great debt of gratitude to all those people who volunteer, not only for our boards and commissions, but for all the other volunteer work that goes on in our great community, so we thank them all very much. Can you poll the board, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Arnett?
Aye.
Trustee Mills?
Aye.
Trustee Newell?
Aye.
Trustee Palafis?
Aye.
Trustee Stanton?
Aye.
Trustee Gata?
Aye.
Mayor McLeod?
Aye. Motion carried. Do you make sure that gets posted, Mr. Norris?
Of course.
A couple of things. When I got some calls from folks who live on Heather Lane complaining about their mail delivery, they have concerns that they're not getting their bills and things aren't showing up, and I suggested that they contact Congressman Raju Krishna Murthy's office and Senators Durbin and Duckworth, because it's a federal matter, but I did want to make mention of, in case there's other folks out there who haven't decided to contact anyone yet, that that's what they should do. And Mr. Norris sent on a missive WT Group's Troy Tropin, named a 2018 Top Midwest Young Professional by National Engineering Trade Journal. Troy Tropin, Chief Operating Officer of the Hoffman Estates Illinois-based WT Group, has been named one of the 2018 Midwest Top Young Professionals by ENR Midwest, an online service of the Engineering and Design Industry Trade Journal Engineering News Record. Tropin was one of a select group of 21 young engineering, design, and construction professionals identified by ENR Midwest as having built extraordinary industry portfolios, donated significant amounts of time and expertise to serve their communities, and worked on innovative industry solutions that save time and money on projects across the U.S. and abroad. Congratulations to Troy, it's a very well-deserved honor. He and his family have been very active for a long time in the Village of Hoffman Estates and the Park District, and we appreciate everything that they do. The Commission for Disabled Citizens will hold its first Friday event for civilians with disabilities aged 14 years or older on Friday, April 6, here at the Village Hall. The event runs from 6:30 p.m. to 8:30 p.m. and includes games, complimentary snacks, and food for purchase. For more information about the event, call 847-781-2606. Does anybody know who's a great citizen that deserves to be recognized in our community? Our boards would love to hear about them and recognize them at an upcoming board meeting. If you've got someone in mind, call Jen Georgievic at 847-781-2610, 847-712610, and provide her with the details. This past week, we had, on Tuesday, trustee Stanton and I attended the March for Meals at the Schaumburg Barn and served the senior citizens, and that's always a very great event. On Wednesday, the 28th, we had a long visit with a boy scout and his family. They were asking about service to the community and what the Village does and how they can be involved in the community, and it was very interesting and it really was very enjoyable for me. I hope it was for them. And on Wednesday evening, we had the Wine Wednesday at First Place, another great turnout for Wine Wednesday, which is always a good event. On Saturday, March 31st, I did go to one of the Easter egg hunts, the one up on the north side that was scheduled for Pine Park but then was moved into the Willow Rec Center, and I support all the hardy members of the Village Board who went out there in the rain and participated in those. This evening, we had the graduation for the Citizens Police Academy, which we have quite a few members that graduated tonight and others who came, previous graduates, so it's a great program, and congratulations, chief, and keep up the good work. Okay, I think I'm done. We'll move on to trustee comments. Does trustee Arnett have anything?
No, nothing tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Trustee Stanton?
Okay. On the 27th, as the mayor mentioned, he and I were at the March for Meals at the Schaumburg Barn. On the 31st, I did go to the Third Egg Hunt at Cannon Crossing, only to find out that it was moved to the Tropin Center. I went there and saw a huge crowd of people inside enjoying the passing out of the plastic eggs on the gymnasium floor. I think there was one batch before I got there, and then they were going in through another batch. They were just prepping it and getting all the kids ready to go. And third, but not last, is congratulations to the graduates of the Citizens Police Academy on tonight's date. That's it.
Thank you. Trustee Mills?
Also want to send congratulations to the Citizens Police Academy, another great class for them, and compliments all around to the police department. Quite a few of them were mentioned, of the graduates were mentioning how exciting and grateful they were for having the class. On March 21st, I attended the Chamber After Hours over at Poplar Creek Entertainment Center. They have certainly fixed that place up, formerly known as Poplar Creek Bowl. And later that evening, I attended the Northwest Mosquito Abatement District meeting out in Wheeling. Only other thing is, and I know she doesn't hear this, but I'd like to send condolences to our former clerk, Virginia Hayder, on the passing of her daughter. It's a very sad time for them, I'm sure.
Yes, indeed. I had a very nice note from her with Village did send flowers.
That's good.
It's in the trustee's room. Thank you. Trustee Palafis?
Also just wanted to repeat, congratulations for our new probationary police officer, Clayton Johnson. Also, it's a police kind of a night. The police, I almost said explorers, the police academy, thank you. The word just wasn't coming. It's always great to see the amount of participation, and I actually had one of my cousins who was in there. I didn't even know that. He was the one with the two little girls.
Oh.
So when I was trying to motion to her, it wasn't just me being weird. That does happen, though.
There were a lot of police around to take care of it.
Yeah, there were. There were. I'm sorry, are we on TV? Also, wanted to congratulate Troy Tropin. What a great honor, and it's just proud to know him and all that he's accomplished and what he's doing. And then to trustee Frank, I agree, you know, there's an unsurmounted amount of garbage, it seems, this spring, and I can't tell if I'm just more aware of it or, you know, if it's just more. And it's everywhere, up and down, you know, Algonquin roads, I see it, Versailles, when you pull into the, by the mobile, you know, where the First Place Bar and Grill is, there's like a small grass area. I think there's more plastic bottles in there than there is like grass and weeds, so I don't know where it all collects or it's coming from, and maybe it's just a collection of the winter. But looking forward to doing code sweep and getting some of that cleaned up. And that's all for me.
Okay. Trustee Newell?
Okay, not much, but on the 21st, attended the Jawa Meeting, and on the 31st, the Easter Egg Hunt in the rain at Fabrini. And last but not least, congrats to the police academy grads and to our new recruit, probationary officer Clayton Johnson, and hopefully trustee Arnett is feeling better by next week, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Trustee Gata?
There we go. On Tuesday, March 20th, attended the nurse Kathy D. from the Health and Human Services Department for her 15th anniversary here at the Village Hall. And then on Sunday, the mayor and I attended the Abahut Media USA Online Newspaper to launch their event at the Temka Indian Restaurant at 2336 West Higgins here in Hoffman. Then on Wednesday, the 28th, Wine Wednesday at First Place Bar, and yes, it was well-attended. And then on Saturday, I was planning to go to all three Easter egg hunts, but I got drowned on the first one, and so did the other people that were there, and so I canceled the other two. So, and congratulations to the police academy also. That's all I had, Mayor.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to six, the Village Manager's Report.
Nothing bad tonight, sir.
Okay, D, Village Clerk's Report.
I always have something to say.
Yes, you do.
During the munch, munch. I'm telling you, I said to Dan earlier, I think it was our dinner, we're just like gingered out or something, spiced out, we just can't speak. During the month of March, 140 FOIAs were processed and 69 passports had gone through, and just a reminder, the acceptance fees did go up today. We had a number of people at 3:15 wanting to get passports on Friday, and four out of, I think it was eight, were not prepared, but they wanted us to process their passports for the $10 cheaper per application. Sorry, you don't have an application, you don't have a check, you don't have photos, you don't have a birth certificate, you're not, we're not processing anything. So they were a little disappointed, but oh, well. That's my sympathy. Oh, well. That's all I got to say.
Oh, well.
Is that it? Yes, you do have to obey federal laws.
Pays to be early.
No sympathy from her.
Homeland Security would probably agree with you.
TSA, for sure.
Is that it, Madam Clerk? Okay. Move on to committee reports. Can you read the General Administration and Personnel for trustee Arnett's statement?
I would be happy to. General Administration and Personnel Committee will meet here in this room next Monday, April 9th, at beginning at 7 o'clock. On the agenda that evening, there are four items. One, discussion regarding legislative update; two, request acceptance of cable TV monthly report; three, request acceptance of human resource management monthly report; and four, request acceptance of legislative operations and outreach monthly report.
Okay. Transportation and Road Improvement.
Transportation and Road Improvement will follow immediately after General Administration and Personnel. On the agenda for that committee, under New Business, discussion of no U-turn restrictions on Westbury Drive near Frank C. Whitley Elementary School; and two, request acceptance of Transportation Division monthly report. They have one item in review, that's the discussion of Steeple Hill Fence and Gate near Alcoa Lane and Washington Boulevard that will not take place until later this year, and then we will adjourn.
Okay, thank you. Planning Building Zone, trustee Stanton?
Following Transportation and Road Improvement Committee, we'll have a roll call, then approval of minutes of March 19th, leading to New Business, and it's monthly reports for the Department of Development Services, Department of Development Services Code Enforcement. First one was Planning Division, and the third is for Economic Development and Tourism. We do have one item in review, which is requested by New Singular Wireless PCS LLC, commonly referred to as AT&amp;T, for approval of an extension to an existing cellular antenna license at 1355 Westbury Drive. Are we going to be doing nothing on this at all?
I will check with Peter tomorrow, since I've been out of town, and find out.
All right. Thank you. After that, we will adjourn.
Okay, thank you. Move on to seven, additional business.
I'd like to make a motion to approve by omnibus votes, item 7, A, B, C, and D.
A second. There's a motion, a second, for omnibus vote on A, B, C, and D. Items A is a request board approval of an ordinance amending section 8-3-22, number of licenses of Article III alcoholic liquors of the Hoffman Estates Municipal Code, decrease the number of Class B licenses, Northwest Oriental Grocery Store, doing business as Unimart, One Stop Shopping, 1038 West Gulf Road, and D and D Group of Schaumburg, doing business as 3D Liquor and Cigar, 840 North Wazzell Road, Hoffman Estates. B, request board approval of the Village creating the 16th Anniversary Commission of the Village of Hoffman Estates. C, request board approval of a two-year agreement between the Village of Hoffman Estates and Das Biergarten LLC. D, request authorization to one, waive formal bidding, and two, award contract for the emergency repair and lining of two sections of sanitary sewer located on Higgins Road at Manchester Drive, Phase 1, to Institute Forum Technologies, Orland Park, Illinois, in an amount not to exceed $82,840. There is a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, can you poll the board, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Arnett?
Aye.
Trustee Mills?
Aye.
Trustee Newell?
Aye.
Trustee Palafis?
Aye.
Trustee Stanton?
Aye.
Trustee Gata?
Aye.
Mayor McLeod?
Aye. Motion carried. We'll move.
Now, do we need another motion? We just, the first motion was for the omnibus.
Yes. Okay, does anyone have a motion?
Yeah.
A second. There's a motion, a second. Any discussion on these? Seeing none, can you call the roll, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Arnett?
Aye.
Trustee Mills?
Aye.
Trustee Newell?
Aye.
Trustee Palafis?
Aye.
Trustee Stanton?
Aye.